This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening, this is the zoning board of appeals for the city of East Hampton. Today is Wednesday, April 24th. Uh, this is going to be a brief hybrid meeting. Uh, we have a couple of brief administrative items to take care of, but then we're going to move on to our applicant. Uh, first of all, is there a public speak to anyone who's interested in speaking concerning anything other than the case in front of us this evening? Hearing nothing to hear. Uh, I look for a motion to approve the minutes from the March 27, 2024 meeting.
Make a motion to approve the March meeting minutes.
All right. Steve seconds. All right. All in favor with a show of hands? All right. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Um, and then uh, we will move on to our first application, which is Grayson Dewitt and Laura Fisher Dewitt seeking a special permit for the construction. They have a new garage where a pre-existing non-conforming garage currently exists on their section 11.12 of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. The property is located at 14 Norton Street in the city of East Hampton. The applicants have asked that we postpone the hearing. Uh, is that correct? I see you online here.
We also have attorney John McLaughlin here uh, with me as well in the room. He's he's just off camera.
Okay. All right, and Laura, we can't hear you. I'm not sure who controls the the mute and unmute on this one. Uh, there we go.
About that, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes, that's correct. We would like to postpone.
Okay, all right. Is there any objections to postpone in the meeting at this point? With no objections heard, uh, we will accept your wishes to postpone uh, for 30 days. Uh, so which will put us at a meeting date of March or May. Quick, give me a number, Dylan.
Mr. Chair, sorry, I believe the request was for the 26th of June, so actually two months and the applicant uh, had the um, that 60 day, 65 day um timeframe uh, for us to make a decision, so that will give us uh, time.
Okay. All right, so so then we will see you on the 26th of June.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
At six o'clock. Correct? Fantastic.
Six o'clock meeting on the 26th of June. Okay.
Okay.
We look forward to hearing you, hearing what you guys have to say.
Thanks, appreciate it.
All right, so on to other business. Uh, Lisa has tendered her resignation from the board. We're sorry to hear. Uh, we've enjoyed your your contributions and your uh, your input. And we look forward, uh, we wish you all the luck and we hope that uh, you come back and join us sometime soon.
Yes, thank you. As I I've enjoyed my time on the board greatly, but unfortunately, life is just a little busy right now to devote to extras. So you know, I would love to be involved in the future and I thank everyone for the opportunity and the, you know, fellowship of being part of this.
Yeah. Well, and we're gonna miss your cat giving its contributions to our meeting. That was always a.
He was just doing that. And here he comes again. He heard you.
Oh, good. There we go.
Right on call.
The star of the show. All right, well, best of luck. Dylan, do we have anything on the horizon for our May meeting?
Uh, I've heard from the folks at um, appearing the the 40B, the community builders and they uh, it looks like they're gonna be ready to move forward with that. Um, in time for that meeting is what they've said. I've yet to receive anything yet. Um, but they're asking, you know, what? What materials they wanna, we need to get submitted, so we should see that soon. Um. We may, I don't know what everybody's schedule is here, um, but we may want to consider if people can make it uh, to be doing potentially two meetings a month to handle this 40B, just given the timeframe we have. It's 100 days from when we receive the application, when we have to make a decision on it. And if we meet once a month, maybe difficult to do that. Um, not impossible, but it will put us in a little bit of a um, a time crunch there. And I know that although we might be able to ask the applicant for more time to extend that. From my understanding of what the applicant is dealing with is they are purchasing land contingent on an approval from the ZBA. And if we continue that out, that could throw off their timetable and could cause um, could cause a deal to fall through, not because we chose to deny it, but because um, the time expired and the the seller decided to no longer sell. Um, so just something we should be aware of. Uh, between now and the next meeting, so everybody could think of whether or not they'd be able to do in every other week uh, for that 40B would be good. And then we could kind of make that decision when we actually have an application.
Okay, uh, currently, it looks like our next meeting would be scheduled for May 22nd. Okay, if we start to look out, that puts us to June 5th. Uh, June 19th. I'm not sure. Are you working on the 19th, Dylan? But it's June 19th.
I am. Oh, that's a good question.
So I don't know what the that, how that falls. Um, we all, we do have a meeting on the 26th scheduled as we just discussed, so maybe we just go to the 26th. Um. And then we could look at July 10th and 24th.
Uh, I believe we have a meeting on July 24th.
Correct. The thought being that we would have it on the the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month.
Hmm. I'll um, I'll put together a draft schedule for everybody and send that out. And then if people know there are meetings that they simply can't make, um, you can let me know that as well. I know myself as well, the July 24th meeting is one that we may have to reschedule that as that is my annual camping trip. So I will be out of town uh, for that date. Um. And in general, if everybody knows kind of what their summer vacation schedule is, um, you can send that into me. Let me know. It will help me in building uh, what could be uh, the 40B uh, schedule as well for as we we handle those meetings.
Can I ask a few questions?
Of course.
So the the 100 days, is that from when we first open a hearing or is that from when it's submitted?
It's from when you first open the hearing.
Okay.
I feel like it'd be. So and and there's there's a timeframe we have from when they submit. I think we have 60 days to open a hearing and then we have 100 days to make a decision.
Okay.
If my memory serves me correctly.
Believe that is correct.
Okay, cuz that, so Dylan, do you have experience with these before from like Amherst or anywhere? Like what this looks like? Okay.
Yep, it's um, typically the way these go is, you know, it's a comprehensive permit. There's there's lots of um, relief they're asking for from zoning. So typically, you know, the way this goes is different meetings will focus on different portions of what they're asking for. You know, maybe it's uh, talking about the traffic uh, is the topic of discussion for that night. And the next one might be um, you know, parking, something like that, what have you. And kind of going point by point through, reviewing uh, the pro forma, which is essentially just their their income uh, statement from the project. Is typically how that goes. Um, and even if everybody likes everything and it's a smooth process, it still just takes time to to go through it.
Okay, and then is there ultimately, there's probably gonna be studies that we ask for, or is it pretty inclusive what they provide?
That's it's hard to say at this point, um, cuz they could very well, having that I I haven't looked at any of what they provided yet. Typically, uh, the I know the folks who are coming to do this, you know, they're not, they're not new to this. Um. So I would expect them to have a good application together that would answer kind of a lot of our questions. Um. But you never know, um, and it may very well be that we're looking at things that we do uh, want an independent review on. Um, and that is something that we we certainly would be within our rights to do.
I guess my one last question is, let's assume this takes like five meetings or something. I guess if you're voting, you're you are expected to sat through all the hearings, right? Like if you can't miss one, so we really have to make sure we're all present, basically?
Yes, so there is a rule, I forgot the name of it, but essentially if you miss, you're allowed to miss one meeting so long as you uh, review the video of that meeting, then you just have to sign a document saying that you did in fact uh, review it. And as long as you've done that, everyone's allowed to miss one and only one. If you miss two, uh, yes, then you you are no longer able to to vote on the project.
That's at least slightly forgiving.
Exactly. All right, thank you.
I had a few questions as well, uh, Dylan and John. It, so is it that the 100 day, we're expecting this to take a lot of time because a lot of community members are gonna probably voice questions and concerns. And there's the large, is that correct?
Yep, that is typically why, there's a, there's a reason why they give you 100 days. It's A to hear everybody and B not to let it drag on forever.
Right.
Um, it's typically when we, the last 40B we had was for Parsons Street Village. And well, I believe that Tony, you were on the board at the time, but we would, we would limit it from 6 a.m. or 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. Uh, we would limit how long people were allowed to public speak. We would limit if we felt that this was the, what they were discussing was previously brought up. And that basically, you know, the people were beating a dead horse on a topic. Um, and that they had to bring something that was relevant to what was being presented at that in that event. So what, as Dylan said, you know, one day will be traffic studies, one day will be um, landscape buffering, one day will be design of structures, things along those lines. And that we can, we can actually dictate that the public speak portion or the questions from the public are directed pertaining to what is on the topic for that evening, as opposed to having to rehash the same thing every meeting.
So the 100 days is is a timetable set by the state, is it? That would, we, the city has to make a ruling within that time? Is that right?
Correct. And if we fail to make a ruling within that 100 days, we lose all control.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering one thing is why not just say, hey, look, what we don't have to have extra meetings. It's really incumbent upon the petitioner to present a thorough and concise case. If they know in advance what we're looking for, then why can't we just say, hey, we're gonna decide this and within two, I mean, 100 days would be three months' time. Could even do it in two months, just two meetings. And that's just the limits and people have a certain limited time and you can write in if you have public questions, people can submit them in writing. Um, I'm just worried personally that not only is it, it's it's a lot of time at any time of the year, but in such short notice and in the summer, when I, I, you know, I also have a a very busy schedule with work and family life and other commitments. And I I would hate to throw a wrench in a, I'm willing to commit to doing this, but I just feel like I don't wanna give unlimited, hey, you know, we're gonna give you 10 meetings over two months, then that's just so that you can just feel like you have plenty of time like it. And oh, and you're not gonna lose your land deal. That seems irrelevant. I don't think we should be accommodating that at all. If they, if they can't sit through the land, that's too bad. Then they can't do the project.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to accommodate uh, people, which was John was talking about. Depending on how controversial this project is, you might have a lot of people who want to uh, have an opinion about it, or you might not. It might be uh, you don't need the meetings and it might be you do need the meetings, but you can't tell until you get started.
Well, why not wait till we go back?
Well, I think that, you know, we have to go into it with the expectation that we're gonna have 100 days to make a decision and that we're gonna have meetings every other week. If we don't need them, great. Believe me, I would, I have things I'd much rather be doing on a Wednesday night for two hours. Um, but I've also understand that, you know, if I was on the other side and I was asking for this cuz it's my project that I wanted to get through or or whatever, I would want the community to be as as understanding as possible.
But they don't even own the land. I don't see why we should be accommodating their fantasy project.
No, no, Matt, you're missing the top at the point. It's that they have this by state law.
Right.
We have 60 days from the receipt of the application to start the process. From that day of our first hearing, we have 100 days to make a decision.
But are we required to do two meetings? The the board meets once a month. I just, I don't see why we're all of a sudden, why don't we meet every single week?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If 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 I may, uh, so one of the issues that we're we're running into here, because typically um, what would happen is if you're hitting that 100 day limit, usually because denial is an option the board has. Typically, we would ask the applicant for an extension and then given that it's well, no extension, then we're simply going to deny. The issue is East Hampton uh, does not have the affordability um, stock that we would need. We need, it was called 10% of our affordability to get what's called safe harbor. We are not at safe harbor and we deny a 40B application. What will happen is then it will get appealed and it goes to a special appellate body that overwhelmingly sides with applicants. So if that happens, we don't reach that 100 day limit, given that the applicants are on um, a timetable. They are within their rights and may very well say, we're not granting an extension of that 100 day.
They should hope that that happens. If that protection is there for them, that we shouldn't be accommodating with extra meetings and going out of our way. If the city of East Hampton, the public wants to be disruptive and prevent us from making a ruling when the board is historically met once a month and that's the commitment, I don't understand why we in advance try. Maybe after, if we find out two meetings in that, hey, we're just, we're gonna have to put some extra meetings in, then why?
Because if we wait, if we wait two meetings in, man, now we are gonna have to meet every week. I would rather go in, I I am saying we're gonna go in with a schedule of every two weeks or two meeting, two meetings a month.
Right.
Because I also don't feel like being there until midnight, cuz that would be the other option. We could have one meeting a month from 6 p.m. until midnight. Well, I have to be at work at 5 o'clock in the morning and I'm not staying up till midnight.
Right, but why are they getting a meeting at a set time? That's where I don't understand all this extra accommodation. And if that's a public, if the public, that's, you know, there's not enough time, that's what the meeting is scheduled for.
Well, but we have to be the idea of a 40B is that if we, if we are if we hold the meetings and we listen to the application, we have the opportunity to steer the project in certain ways. If we are defiant in our approach, we lose all control. They then go to the state, as Dylan has said, and basically say, East Hampton hasn't wanted to play by the rules. And they can come in here and basically build whatever they want because we are not, we don't have the the stock of of low-income homes that is required by the state of Massachusetts. So we're gonna have meetings every two weeks. If you're saying right now you can't make those meetings, then maybe, you know, maybe you need to resign from the board and and we'll find other people who can. But I'm saying that, you know, as an effort and we've done this, we've set precedent as is we've done in the past, that we've held meetings every two weeks for a 40B application.
Well, do other towns meet like that? And every two weeks, every project that some developer was to propose? It doesn't even own the land. I mean, this doesn't seem.
Only the land has nothing to do with it.
So I could come up with a 40B project myself.
Every two weeks regularly anyways.
For weeks.
Their regular patterns every two weeks to handle development load. So it is common in other communities just to meet every two weeks throughout the year, regardless of special considerations. So there's precedent for that elsewhere.
Now, you've had a 40B meeting in the past, correct?
Yes.
How did that go? Did you need all the meetings that you outlined? Did it go the five or twice a month?
Um, we met twice a month. And I think that we came, I think it at the probably the 80 day mark. We had, we got to the point where we'd heard everything so many times, cuz we, this is why I'm saying, you know, we need to be very specific. But it gave us an opportunity. We actually had them re redesign part of the project to meet the, some of the bufferings and the complaints from, you know, the 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 concerns expressed by the by the neighbors. Um, we, it gave us an opportunity to give some architectural, you know, questions or or things along those lines. It was, it was an opportunity for us as a board to help guide the project as opposed to just rubber stamping it and saying, well, we're, you're gonna, we're gonna get it anyway. So we might as well just lay down on the street and let it happen. You know, this is, this is the idea of the 40B is that it gives the community an opportunity to hear what's gonna happen and give the Board of Appeals the opportunity to guide the project in the best interest of the community.
So along the way, when you had some hiccups, you were able to uh, take care of those hiccups when they came up and to give you an opportunity to listen to them and to address them.
Absolutely. You know, we, we had, we had questions about vegetation. Um, yeah, the 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 presentation, it's not on a, on a on one piece of paper or or, yeah, it's a, it's a full project because they're putting in roadways, they're putting in sewers. They're putting in hydrant systems, um, vegetation, the, you know, the the level of the buildings that they're putting in, the accessibility of the buildings, the effects on the local roads. They have to do, they have to do street studies and um, traffic pattern studies. There's, there's a variety of the the volume of information that is presented. Yeah, I wish I, I wish I had the book that that I was handed, but it was, yeah, it was probably a three or four inch pay, you know, three or four inch book of information on the design and the specs and the 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 plot plans and everything like that. You have structural engineers, landscape architects, traffic engineers, you know, it's, it is a just a full body of information that's presented. And in an effort to keep meetings so they're short enough that your attention span doesn't wane. And, you know, and still be respectful of, these people are coming to us asking for something. We, we have to be, uh, we have to meet them halfway.
Well, I'm not saying that you don't wanna accommodate and and make it, but I think if they know in advance, I mean, they're gonna, exactly what they're gonna have to submit is they're, they, they're working with Dylan and presumably and his team uh, to know exactly what they're submitting. So it's almost like a a binder with every single thing that we're going to address in advance. So that we're not, it's not surprises what the next meeting is gonna be discussing. We already have a agenda, isn't that right?
Um. Uh, so if I may, Mr. Chair, just a suggestion I can put out there, um, cuz want just to to address that point. I know when we had a 40B that we worked on in Amherst, it was a similar uh, 40B in that um, it was one that had been solicited by um, our town council and it had come to us and we, Amherst is at that 10%, so we were able to ask for an extension, but Amherst uh, regularly meets uh, twice a month on their ZBA. And it took um, several meetings, all going to three hours. Um, and it took about eight months to to work through that. And that's just, just going through the information, going through it with the public. It it just can take time. But what I can do here is I can, once we know the date, we're actually receiving the application and we know when the hearing will be open, we know when that 100 days is. I can put together um, a draft schedule ahead of that meeting, send that out to everybody. And then folks who know they can commit to that schedule can sit on for the 40B. And if there are folks who, you know, it it doesn't fit um, the schedule, that would be fine as well. They'd be able to to step off for that project, but still be able to attend the regular meetings and still serve for uh, other agenda items that can still come to us during the time of the 40B as well. So I.
Cuz that's something, that is something, that is something to keep in mind, is we still get other applications along the way as well. So, you know, it it is worth having dedicated meetings just for the 40B. And if somebody else comes in, so these folks have already said they wanna come back on the 26th of June. And, you know, do we hold a special meeting for them? And not interrupt the 40B hearing, or do we have it included with that 40B hearing? Well, yeah, that's too early to tell. We don't know what level, what volume of applicants we're gonna get. And we have a very tight timeframe and we have to hold to that timeframe. The last thing I want is the state coming in and telling the, you know, the city that, you know, the zoning board didn't do what they were supposed to do. So you're gonna get what you get. That's not the commitment that I made to the city of East Hampton when I said I wanted to be the chairman of the zoning board.
But that, that's another issue. I mean, that, that's kind of your interpretation of what that result means for you personally, and I understand that, John, but I don't necessarily agree with that as the mission of the zoning board. As far as if this project, if these affordable housing is a good thing for East Hampton, I don't really believe that the state of Massachusetts is a, is like a an entity that wants to come in and just do projects in a haphazard way, or that that would necessarily even be bad if they did come in. So that's, who knows? But I, and you'd suggested that if I didn't wanna or couldn't, it wasn't available to these extra meetings, you're saying I should just resign, but it sounds like Dylan's saying I could just not participate and not relinquish my role here.
That's an option as well. You know, the biggest, the most important part is we need to have a quorum.
I, and I agree. And I'm not trying to make, I, I, there's nothing more I would like to do. It's very interesting. I would love to give feedback. But I'm, I'm a little bit worried just personally, given what this is sounding like, it's very serious commitment. Um. In a very uncertain timetable and a very busy part of the year for me, uh, both.
I agree.
You know, so I'm, it's just a little bit worrisome.
All right, well, Dylan, I think the best thing we can do is you keep us informed as to what you hear. If we can start, you know, at least if everyone can let Dylan know what their schedules look like for the summer and maybe for the next six months, let's just be very simple. You know, for the next six months, when do you have vacations planned that you're gonna be out of town? It's, it's the best we can do to, for for Dylan to be prepared when that application arrives. And, you know, we do have 60 days to start that first meeting. And maybe, you know, if they don't get that applicant, if the application is not received until June 1st, well, then we have 60 days to accept it, which would then be June, July, August 1st, and we're, we're into the, you know, we only have one month of summer left. But we have to make that decision based on what availability we have with members and what availability we have of when that application is received. Okay. Is there any other questions that folks have? Yep. Go ahead, Matt.
Um. So, so we're not, uh, in other, in other words, the, is it no, two questions. Is it common to accept a 40B application in this manner for for a project that doesn't have this, secure the property, just a theoretical project?
It's, it's not, um. I wouldn't say it's, it's totally uncommon or unheard of um, to to have something like that. The, the, I mean, for any project as well, I know that um, the Small Oven Bakery, that was a project we approved and the sale of that property was contingent on on our approval. So for not only 40Bs, but any project, it's, it's definitely not uncommon um, that you have a sale pending approval.
Okay, so and and um, so you're furthermore saying that we don't have to open this hearing right away. You have 60 days to even decide.
Well, we have 60 days to open.
Right.
Yeah, I believe. So Dylan, if you could also confirm the timeframe of.
I just feel that it's a bit um, con. I just feel that it's a bit, um, con- compressed in terms of planning and timetables and this one's personal and professional schedule is not just kind of like clearable within such short notice. So.
Well, I think we, it's been a pretty open conversation that we had this on the table coming.
That something could come, but so far we've seen nothing. So, and then they don't, it sounds like it's kind of, they don't even know if they're going to do it. So we're, I mean, yeah, I, I anytime within the next six months, some, but things kind of change a lot too. So it's, it's sort of.
Yeah. Uh, and, and so that's, that's all part of, part of the experience.
Well, I'll make sure to put together, uh, ahead of formally opening the hearing when we know we've received the application before we've opened it. Um, I'll, I'll put forward, uh, kind of a draft schedule, send out to everybody. And then once you receive that, you'll be able to make that decision, you know? Is it something you commit to or, cause it's, it is perfectly reasonable that people can't make more than that commitment of that one day a month. It is what people have signed up for. But if we can get a quorum that can meet that draft schedule, then, then, uh, I think it makes sense for us to, to go ahead and do that.
I guess what I'm suggesting, I'd like to suggest that we say to the applicant that the board needs sixty days before we commit to starting this so that board members can prepare and adjust their schedules and plan accordingly. I think it's unreasonable to ask us to clear our calendars out for meetings that are starting every two weeks, beginning in June, when things they've made, like people's schedules are already planned. So this shouldn't be, we shouldn't be.
I think that's the intent of the sixty day, Matt. That is the intent of the sixty days.
To wait sixty days.
No, that the, the state understands that people have a life. And that this is a commitment. It's a heavy lift from everybody on the board. And that it takes time for people to understand what the commitment is and how, you know, what's, what's truly involved. And from that point, then we can go ahead and commit to, this will be the schedule and we're going to start as of this date. And we have up until, I'm, I'm using sixty days as this is to the best of my recollection.
But earlier it sounded like you were saying we should start this either in, in May or in June, and we'll start having meetings every two weeks beginning.
I was just looking at the calendar. I was just looking at the calendar.
I'm thinking, what I'm suggesting is it'd be better to say, hey, it, let the applicant know it's probably not going to start for at least sixty days because this is a special hearing and the, and the, and the board members need time to prepare for it as well. We can't just start having meetings every two weeks, starting next week or even next month. We need time to, to plan.
Yeah. Correct. Exactly what I just said, Matt. All right. Is there any other questions?
No.
Okay. Motion for adjournment?
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor? Show of hands.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.